I'm gonna call, it's seven o'clock and I'm gonna call the town council meeting of October 28th, 2025 to order. Actually, it's been 20 years since I sat here last. Twenty years ago is nothing for Richard, but it's a lot for me. But anyway, I'm very happy to be here tonight for a variety of reasons. This is actually a pretty fun event. We haven't had a buzz like this in this meeting room for a long time. It's nice to hear. So let's get started here. We'll do the roll call. The town clerk would do so.
Mayor Domkowski is absent. Councilmember Abarish is absent. Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Wall? Vice Mayor Gold?
Here. So we do have a quorum, correct? And we're okay to go to get started? I also wanted to call this meeting to order in honor of a recently, I just found out that Perry Vartanian, who was the mayor of Woodside and served on the town council, I think for eight years, if I'm not mistaken. In fact, you see his name on the plaque as you walk up the steps from the parking lot here. He died about a week or so ago. A very good friend and a really classy guy, and he will be missed. There's going to be a memorial service for him, I think, in about two or three weeks, and I'll get that information out. But I'm chairing this tonight in his honor. Anyway, we'll get started with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask Melissa to lead us in the pledging.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have public communications. So this is for persons who wish to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda. You're invited to speak now. Note that the council is unable to take extended discussion or act on any non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate actions. It's limited to five people at the beginning, and I already see somebody is here. Mr. Mittelman.
Thank you, Ms. Gold. David Mittelman, 280 Grandview, living up the hill. Tomorrow there'll be a meeting in this hall, a community meeting with Caltrans about Four Corners. This is the second such meeting in so many years. As the last time we held it, as the last time we held one, it was in response to the Highway 84 washout when calls for emergency maintenance went unheeded. Caltrans should have a closer relationship with this town. Considering state highways define both of our town centers, our relationship should not be a reactionary one, where we get together every 24 months and discuss the last thing that went wrong. District Five by land area is almost half of the town. It is nuanced in this makeup with many distinct islands of houses separated by topography. Skywood Acres, Grandview, Martinez, neck of Lane, Lakewood, Skylonda, Big Tree, Old LaHonda Road, as well as Alice's Restaurant, Mountain Terrace, and Skywood Trading Post. I feel like a broken record. We have a citizen advisory committee for town center. We are potentially spending nearly $670,000 to do so, updating an area plan that is as old as I am, but no committee updating the area plan for Four Corners. No one at Caltrans to maintain a regular relationship with besides our overworked staff. No one to centralize discussions for a district of the town that is so distinct from the other four. No one to liaise with the unincorporated areas of San Mateo County that border this section of town, which in many ways are part of Woodside despite being just outside our borders. We aren't asking for a good city's roadshow. We aren't asking for an appropriation. We are requesting the formation of a standing committee with representatives from each neighborhood and business to advise this council on issues in District Five after they are studied separately from the regular business of the council. Things like objective design standards for the Western Hills, evacuation sirens in case of wildfires, the town's relationship with the county park system, Mid Penn, and Slack. I have never seen the mountains email lists more active than after the Four Corners accident. People are generally worried that this will be an excuse to cut down seven mature, significant redwood trees that define the highest point of our town. To get rid of parking for one of our defining landmarks and community gathering spaces, the issue is not in the area with Alice's, but in the straightaway of Highway 35. I ask that this council implore Caltrans not to make significant changes of Four Corners without studying the issue with the same rigor we would study any substantial change in our town. We are asking the council to create an appointed body of District Five representatives to liaise on behalf of the town and advise the council when it is time for policy and action so that those of us who live on the mountain feel properly represented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. As you know, there's a meeting on the Four Corners issue right here tomorrow night.
Yes.
What time does it start? 5:30?
5:30.
Okay, right here. So that would be actually a, Caltrans is gonna be here.
That's correct.
It's gonna be a very comprehensive meeting. I know you're well aware of it.
Yes.
Okay.
We're spending a different amount of time to study a different area of town.
I understand.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Anybody in the Zoom room?
There's one hand raised.
Okay.
Vanessa Johnson, I'm going to allow you to talk. You can unmute yourself.
Hi. We'd just like to congratulate Richard Maines on his 25 years as the Rec Committee Chair. And we're here to toast him with some Mai Tais.
Okay. You're a little early with that, but that's okay.
I know.
I hope you can see us.
Cheers.
Cheers.
Congratulations, Richard.
Thank you. Any other public comment, items not on the agenda? Seeing none? Okay, we have some business tonight. I'm going to take the liberty of, we have two proclamations tonight, taking the liberty of flipping them in a different order. This first one that I'm going to give, and I understand that Tracy Cook from Cora is here. If you'd like to come forward, I appreciate it. But this proclamation is, this particular month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I wanted to present this proclamation to Cora. Town of Woodside Proclamation honoring Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas October has been recognized nationally as Domestic Violence Awareness Month since 1989, a time for communities to unite in support of survivors and to raise awareness of domestic violence. And whereas the Domestic Violence Awareness Project calls for partnership, safety, support, and solidarity with those who have survived domestic violence, it stands as a powerful call to action for advocates, supporters, and policymakers alike. And whereas across California, more than 150,000 domestic violence-related calls for service are received every year, equating to an average of 18 calls per hour. It's a remarkable statistic. And about a third of women and a third of men in California will experience intimate partner violence or stalking during their lifetimes. And whereas reductions in violence, enhanced safety planning, and increased survivor resilience recognizes survivors by actively fostering their safety, autonomy, and flourishing futures. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this 28th day of October 2025, that I, Paul Gold, Vice Mayor of the Town of Woodside, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm gonna present this to you, Tracy.
Thank you. Well, I certainly don't want to bring down the mood at all for the celebration. Congratulations, by the way. Just quickly, I'm Tracy Cook. I'm the Director of Human Resources for CORA, which stands for Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse. We are the only provider of comprehensive services for survivors of intimate partner abuse and domestic violence within San Mateo County. And we are deeply committed to supporting individuals and families impacted by abuse. We provide, in case you are not aware, a 24-hour hotline available 365 days a year, emergency sheltering for those in crisis, legal services for restraining orders to divorce and child custody, mental health services for adults and children, long-term rental assistance with up to three years of subsidized housing, prevention and education programs in the high schools and at community events, and satellite clinics in East Palo Alto, Co-Side, and San Bruno. DEVAM, as we like to refer to it, is a time to raise awareness about abuse that's often hidden in the shadows. And the statistics are pretty sobering. One in four women, one in seven men, one in two transgendered individuals will be victims of domestic violence. It isn't limited to married couples. It can occur in any intimate relationship. It includes physical, verbal, emotional, and financial abuse. We encourage everyone to visit our website at www.cora-support.org to learn more. And finally, we want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Woodside. We work very closely with the Sheriff's Department in co-res應ing to domestic violence calls, and we deeply appreciate your support. And with Woodside's proclamation tonight, every jurisdiction in San Mateo County has now recognized DEVAM. This is a historic moment, and we will be sharing a press release to mark this milestone. So thank you guys very much for having me.
Thank you, Tracy. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay. Everybody's here for a very specific reason, and so we're gonna change frames for a second here. So I'm actually, it's an interesting night for me, sitting, not over there, but sitting here tonight. Thank you to Brian for going to Europe this week so that I could sit in for him. But I'm actually, I'm very happy and honored to be able to present this to Richard Maines tonight. And I've got a few things that I wanted to say here before I actually even get to the proclamation. This is a very well-deserved honor. I've known Richard for a few years, and he's one of those really rare individuals who's smart and charismatic and dedicated. Yeah, this guy right here. And really dedicated, and he's done so much for the town. And I just wanted him to know that we appreciate it. You know, about 10 days ago, we had the volunteer reception outside, and it was interesting seeing all the people that were out there. And you'd be very hard-pressed to find anybody who has been involved with the town for 25 years. And it's a long time, and it clearly deserves recognition. I did want to mention something about the Recreation Committee, which, as my fellow council members know, is the best committee. So you don't think I say that, but I actually do say it every time I talk here. They can tell you. It's actually not one of those quiet committees, as we can tell tonight. But it actually does stuff. I mean, I'm not saying other committees don't do things, don't get me wrong. But they are one of the busiest groups of people in Woodside. They have something going every single month. And I actually had to write some of them down because I don't remember them all. But there's adult softball, the Soapbox Derby, the camping trip. Right, Rowan, the camping trip? The Ice Cream Social, W-Ball for kids, tennis, yoga, Cars and Coffee, working on the farmer's market right now, and the May Day Fun Run, which is Woodside's single biggest event. And it takes an awful lot of effort to pull that off. And it seems like every single month, there's something coming down the pipe. And it's a great committee. I did want to recognize Rowan, who's taken over here as chair. And it's just, it's, it, it, he knows how big those shoes are to fill. And there's a lot of seniority on that committee, and they do a great job. And I'm just always in awe that, you know, with the amount of energy and effort that they put in, it's a fantastic and really amazing group. So with that, I do have a proclamation that I wanted to make for Richard. So I'd ask Richard to just stand up, stand up at the microphone if you'd like. Because this is a long proclamation. And as the people in this room know, I love to talk. Town of Woodside Proclamation honoring Richard Maines, former chair, former chair, of Woodside's Recreation Committee. Whereas the Town of Woodside wishes to formally recognize and express gratitude for outstanding service and dedication by its community members. And whereas the Town recognizes the importance of Woodside's Recreation Committee in fostering a vibrant, active community, contributing to the well-being and recreational opportunities for our residents, and promoting a cohesive and harmonious community. And whereas Richard Maines has dedicated his time and energy to Woodside's Recreation Committee, providing long and valuable service to the town. And whereas Richard Maines has served as chair of Woodside's Recreation Committee for a remarkable 25 years, capably recruiting and organizing its diverse membership, providing leadership for its many projects, and promoting novel creative ideas for the town. And whereas Richard Maines has and continues to serve as the Recreation Committee's Softball Commissioner, a thankless and often dangerous, a dangerous job requiring careful navigation of an overly complex set of ever-changing rules, settling numerous on-the-spot disputes from cantankerous team managers, and capably and diplomatically disqualifying all of those out-of-town ringers who willfully invade the sacred tranquil diamond that is Willie McCovey Field. And whereas Richard Maines serves as coordinator of Woodside's May Day Fun Run event, where he organizes runners, provides fantastic music, is the official starter of the race, where he often displays restraint with his bullhorn, only asking for two chocolate-covered doughnuts from Chuck's as his just reward, which I had to bring you last year. And whereas it has been more than 50 years since Richard Maines was Karen, excuse me, Mrs. Peterson's student at Woodside Elementary School. And whereas, wait a second here. And whereas Ms. Peterson acknowledges Mr. Maines' spirited leadership even back then, and wishes to note that it is about time that one of her all-time favorite students is recognized for his many years of dedication and accomplishments. And whereas Richard Maines has demonstrated commitment and service to our community that is deserving a formal commendation, now, therefore, I, Paul Gold, Vice Mayor of the Town of Woodside, on behalf of the town council and all Woodside residents, do hereby offer our sincere thanks, gratitude, and appreciation to Mr. Richard Maines for his years of devoted service to the community through his work on the Recreation Committee, and especially for his 25 years serving as its chair. This is for you, Richard.
Okay. All right, I'll make this short. Usually I'm in the front here, managing the Recreation Committee. And as Paul said, it is the best committee. You know, first of all, I wanted to thank all of you guys for the opportunity to be part of the Rec Committee and, you know, support all these crazy ideas and events that we always pull off, no matter what. I wanted to thank specifically the current and past Rec Committee members that are here and not here, that helped make this committee amazing and fun. You know, I think that we all selfishly wanted to do, you know, an ice cream social. So away we went. And someone wanted to do a golfing tournament, or a somewhat awful tennis tournament, or, you know, roller skating rink, visiting, doing, you know, a skating rink day, or a roller derby event, or Broom Ball. Of course, that's a very valid event to do. And so the Rec Committee has always been fun. And everybody that's been part of the Rec Committee has their own special fun events that they wanted to sponsor, you know. And, you know, we take the little events and the big barn dance events that we've done in the past. And anyway, it's just been fantastic. And, you know, selfishly, I just needed to have the key to the gym so we could play some soccer during the winter. And that always happened, that happened. And, you know, as you can see, the people that are supporting me behind me are my friends from the community, some very dear friends from elementary school supporting me, my family, you know, my lovely family, my mom, and my wife, and my daughter, and my dear friends from, there's a couple of people here that I went to elementary school at Woodside Elm here that are all part of this little community. So it's selfishly a wonderful honor to be part of the Rec Committee. And chairing it was not totally my goal to try to break the record of 25 years. No one wanted it. So, you know, we have all these wonderful people on the committee. And, you know, I would say the average 10 years, probably, you know, what, 10-plus years? You know, Jim? I don't know. There's lots of people here that have been here a very long time. And no one wanted to be chairperson. And I was like, okay, you know, as long as I get the key to the gym, I'm good. And so, so then Rowan came along and was like, all this really wonderful energy. And then the spirited group that's part of our Rec Committee now that is, you know, have children that are just starting Woodside Elementary is bringing the juice back. So it's kind of fun to see Rowan take it over and the rest of us just hop on and go. So, and, you know, we have some really good support people like Paul that we deal with all the time. Melissa's amazing. Cindy was part of our group for a long, long time. So really, really appreciate Jennifer with all our, you know, the website and all that fun stuff. So anyway, just really, really appreciate everyone supporting and everyone here. You guys are crazy. Anyway, that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
We want to take some photographs. We have a photographer in the house, Jim Milton, our staff photographer is here. I appreciate the indulgence. Nice event. We don't get them that often. Anyway, we go to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and Woodside Town Council. This is Jason Ledbetter with the Town Manager Report. On Saturday, November 1st, the Town will have a cleanup day at Woodside Elementary School. That'll be from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. If you plan on attending, please bring the Town postcard or bring your green waste monthly invoice. On 10/15, I attended a monthly meeting with the three HOA presidents over at the Little Store. On 10/17, I attended the Volunteerism Committee gathering here at Town Hall. Also, on 10/17, I responded to a road closure and crash on Portola Road, where a motorcycle crashed into a fire hydrant, causing water to flood the area and requiring a road closure. I met with the sheriff deputies on the scene, and we worked to have an SMC alert go out by the sheriff's office concerning that road closure on Portola Road. On Sunday morning of 10/19, I attended the Woodside West Emergency Evacuation Meeting via Zoom. On Tuesday, October 21st, town staff mocked an Emergency Operations Center tabletop exercise with members of WPV Ready and/or Epic. The exercise was about emergency preparedness and response for an earthquake. And we're gonna continue to develop and continue to work on more future tabletop exercises. On Thursday, 10/23, I attended the Local Hazard Mitigation Planning Preparation Meeting with San Mateo County OES and DEM. And so currently, the county is taking the lead on getting a contractor in to update the local hazard mitigation plan. And so I'm working with Eddie from Public Works to do that. On Monday, 10/27, I attended the Joint Circulation and Trails Meeting to discuss the town council prompt to create an ordinance about the use of e-bikes in Woodside on trails. The group had an interesting conversation about the topic, and we'll be having another meeting to explore their options soon. On Wednesday, 10/29, I will be at the Town Hall here tomorrow night at Independence Hall. First, at 5:30, we're gonna discuss the intersection of Highway 84 and Highway 35 with Caltrans. And then at 6:30, we'll have District Supervisor Mueller, the Department of Emergency Management, Woodside Fire Protection District, and the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office will be on hand to discuss the SMC alert system. And once again, that is tomorrow evening, starting at 5:30 with Caltrans, and then SMC alert at 6:30. And that's all I have.
Any questions of the Town Manager and the council? Any questions from the public? Or anything online? No? Okay. I have one quick question for you. One logistical question. So tomorrow, we have two consecutive meetings back-to-back here. Any concerns about, you know, Caltrans meeting could run long?
Not at the moment, but if it does run long, I'll be chairing or emceeing the meeting. Ultimately, if we need to have it extend 15 minutes, that's fine. But ultimately, the setup of the meeting is really 30 minutes of a Zoom engagement and then 30 minutes of onsite. And so we're gonna focus on the engagement aspect of Zoom first, and then transition to just in-person. But primarily, our goal is to interact with the public. And so depending on how many people show up, that'll dictate how long we want to stay on each particular topic. But very close to 6:30, we're gonna have to make the transition because we have people showing up specifically to talk about SMC alerts. But I feel, I feel pretty good that we'll be able to make it work.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason, I had a question there. On this meeting, is it gonna open with some views of what are already in the works? And then, or is it all totally input of what should be in the works?
My understanding is Caltrans will be bringing diagrams of what they plan on doing at the intersection, and they'll be available on hand here to physically work that. And then they will be providing a PowerPoint presentation with similar renderings that we will be showcasing on the big screen and then on the Zoom as well.
Will there be input from the audience about what they'd like to see beyond what's on the short-term plan?
Yeah, that was the goal of the meeting, was to basically daylight that something was gonna happen at the intersection and try to incorporate the public opinion into the agency that's about to take the action. So we're advocating that if you have an opinion, to show up and share that opinion tomorrow night to Caltrans. Because it sounds like they're gonna have a short-term fix. This is my understanding, that there's $400-plus thousand to go create a four-way stop at this location. And then that they are hypothetically also taking feedback on a longer-term project that may or may not happen in the future. So I think it's important that people do show up and have the opportunity, at bare minimum, to engage the agency that will be doing the work.
Yeah. Is the longer-term solutions, they're talking about inserting parking and restructuring the intersection and that sort of thing?
Longer-term solutions may just come with a larger grant funding in order to do maybe something more substantial at the intersection. I do still believe that they're looking at, they could be talking about parking. I'm not sure. I think they, Caltrans owns that median there. And so ultimately, the town is really just acting as an opportunity to allow engagement between the agency and the public.
Okay.
Sorry, not really a question, maybe a suggestion. It occurred to me as you were talking. I think it might be beneficial for the public to kind of have some of that context around the intersection is managed by Caltrans, and maybe debrief folks there on like what the town's role would be in any project. I know I could benefit from that information. So maybe if you wouldn't mind kind of having that prepared to then share with the folks that are attending tomorrow, I think that would be really useful.
Yeah, I'll give a brief understanding of why we're having the meeting and then ultimately take the opportunity to educate the public because ultimately, I think it's very confusing as to how the different agencies all interact over the responsibility. So we'll be sure to showcase that aspect.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. There are four items on it. Anybody want to remove any of those items? So the Consent Calendar, all items are considered to be routine and will be approved by one roll call motion unless the request is made to remove any items. No? We're good?
Move we approve all four. Them's on the agenda.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Wall? Vice Mayor Gold?
Yes. Consent calendar passes entirely. New business is the 2025-26 First Quarterly Budget Review. And I'm guessing I'm turning it over to Cindy. Yes?
That sounds good. Good evening, Vice Mayor Gold and council members. You have before you the 25-26 First Quarterly Budget Review for the Town of Woodside. The recommendation is that the town review and accept the first quarterly budget review. The discussion part, just going over in broad brushstrokes, is the general fund as of September 30th. And the largest revenue source is property taxes overall throughout the year. But it isn't received until December, so we don't do that till the mid-year. And then we get another tranche in April. The biggest amount of revenue as of the first quarter is licenses and permits. And one of the reasons is because those are collected every day. The rest of the revenues are usually collected every month, and the transfers are made at the end of the year. The intergovernmental category covers the VLF. That's where that is in the budget. The second part is the expenses. And the largest expense in the expenses is the sheriff's bill. The second part is the expenses, and the largest expense in the expenses is the Sheriff's Bill. And we hadn't received the Sheriff's Bill at this point. We do have it now, and it's being paid this Friday. We get that twice a year. So overall, the General Fund expenditure is less by 1.5 million because last year, we got the Sheriff's Bill before the first quarter, and this year, we got it afterwards. The other increase is in salaries and benefits, and that's because we make a lump-sum payment to calpers at the beginning of the year. And this year's a little bit more than it was last year. And expenses and revenues are at expected levels for the first quarter of this year. As of September 30th, the General Fund cash on hand is about $6.2 million. And the projected operating revenues is 52%, which is 22% above the 30% operating revenue required by the Town Council. That's a lot of numbers, sorry. Town Council Financial Management Policy, so that's why I bring it up. We want to make sure that you know that you're within your policy, well within your policy. The last paragraph covers the investment, but the investment report is more recent. That was in the Consent Calendar. And I would refer to that. We have two investments in PARS. One is the Pension, and the other is the OPEB. Then the last part of the report, the second section, reviews all the Town Funds, including the General Fund. And the Town's cash position for all funds is $13.9 million. It was higher by about $1 million, and the reason why is because we haven't paid the sheriffs. That's, we're a small town, so a lot of things could be explained by one big bill not being paid. And everything else is just about the same. It's recommended that the Town Council review this and accept this report. And if there's any questions I can answer, please let me know, and thank you.
Any questions from the Town Council?
Not a question, but a comment. And that's that, and this may be more for you, Jason, than anybody else, is the projected General Fund cash, projected operating revenues is 52%. It sounds good, but in perspective, when I joined the Council, it was over 60%, as I recall. And prior to that, it was probably over 70%. But we're definitely on a downward trend, and it's something we need to be very aware of as we start to look forward to other programs in the future, is maybe we set ourselves, our bottom line, 50% is the max. We're going to drop down to whatever. But if we don't keep looking at that ratio, we're going to find ourselves a few years from now, after we look at our long-range Town Center Plan, and say, oh, yeah, let's do that. What are we going to be looking like as a cash position? Where are we going to generate the cash to pay for all these things we want to do?
So you have a comment on that? Councilmember Brown, I appreciate you pointing that out because ultimately, I am working with Bond Counsel Cameron Weest, who I'd worked with in Wyrica. He's coming out of Campbell. In Santa Clara, we had lunch, and so he is putting together a proposition for us to look at some long-term financial planning, and then to tie together hypothetically how we would work on the CIP, and then the items that come out of the TCAP, how we would fund those projects. And then ultimately, the different opportunities for revenue streams that the town could possibly look into if they desire to look into. So you will be seeing me advocate for a contract for that in the future that ultimately, I think, ties into the long-term, deeper understanding of the financial picture of the town.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to ask a follow-up question related to whether we were looking for other sources of funding. It's really reassuring to hear that you're having those conversations because I think, you know, who knows how the Citizen Advisory Committee, what their recommendations will be, but I think it's, you know, realistic to assume that we should come to the table knowledgeable about what additional funding sources could help us there. My question is, so I will start my question by saying I am not the most fluent in reading these financial reports. So pardon me if this question is like really simple. But I'm looking at Attachment A, and I'm seeing that the department, the department that's listed as Townwide Overhead is already coming in at 51% of the total, which we're only at the first quarter. So that seems about 25% higher than maybe we would like to see. Could maybe just help me understand like why that's coming in at 51% and not lower?
Yes, I'm happy to. The reason why it's so much more in the first quarter is because the Townwide Overhead has the Plan Premium. And the Plan Premium, which is our risk management pool, is paid one time at the beginning of the fiscal year and then not paid the rest of the year. So that's the other payment, besides the calpers' one-time payment that covers the entire year, and it kind of overinflates that particular department.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Cindy, any comments on what Dick brought up about our cash balance that historically it's been in the... Because I, you made a great point, because when I saw 52 and it's 30 percentage points over the, or, sorry, 22 percentage points of the 30 that's required, it sounds great, but it may be sliding downhill too, as you said.
Well, one reason that it's down a little bit is because we put a lot of money into a PARS 115, Section 115 Pension Plan, and that part is not counted as part of the General Fund money that can be spent on anything because it's restricted to just pensions. So I don't know what it would be if we added that back in, that $3 million.
Yeah, but we can't use it for that, so it's not a general fund.
Right. So that's one of the reasons why we don't have the same amount of money as we had before, because we have this.
So the trade-off is the pension is better funded, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
A little bit lower than it...
Absolutely. And the other thing about the PARS investment is it's more diversified than just the state investment, which doesn't earn much.
All right. No other comments or questions? Anything from the public in the Zoom room? Nothing there? Okay. We will close that, and I guess we need to accept this report, correct? Yes. So I'll take a motion to accept the quarterly report.
Well, I'd say before I make the motion, which I will, in terms of deliberation, I just would say thank you, Cindy, for the really clear presentation. It was really helpful to kind of hear you talk us through that. So thank you for that, and unless there's further deliberation, I would make a motion to approve the report.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Wall?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gold?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Cindy, thank you for the report. Okay. Reports of Volunteer Committee Updates.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Vice Mayor Gold. This coming Sunday, November 2nd, at 2:00 p.m., the Environment and Open Space Committee is holding a Rodents, Mosquitos, and More Keep Your Home Pest-Free Event with the San Mateo County Vector Control. And Rick Morris from In the Wild with Rick Morris will be there as well, too. He's a photographer and has been photographing owls in nearby area, and just spectacular photography. He came and talked last year. You'll learn simple tips to protect your home from rodents and other pests, hear about free services available to residents, and have a chance to ask questions. We did have people RSVP, and the deadline was Friday, but we still have seats available if people still would like to come.
Can I make a comment on this?
Yes.
For anybody who doesn't realize it, any homeowner around the area knows that we're infested with rodents. It's a huge problem. Certainly, I spend my life trying to protect myself. And they do a great disvector group, which is a county group, does a great job. They came out to my house. They walked around the whole house. They identified every spot where they thought that the rodents were possibly getting underneath the house. I did what they said. Problem went away. Whereas now the rodents are building their houses away from me, but it's a great program that they run, and it's something I think we ought to make sure all of our residents are sort of aware of. I hope we have.
We had 53 people sign up to attend, so...
Probably wasn't one of them, so I'm going to be there.
We'll see you on Sunday. And then the Spirit of Woodside Youth Photography Exhibit will be taking place on Friday, November 7th, from 5:30 to 6:30 in here, where the winners will be announced. Photographs will be on display, and the young artists will be in attendance with their families. And I have to tell you that the photographs are amazing. We ended up, I think, with 14 submissions, and they are incredible. So if you can come, please come see them. And at 7:00 p.m. the same evening, the Arts and Culture Committee First Friday Event will be taking place, where fine art photographer Jennifer Frazier will speak about her photography. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. We are at Councilmember Communications. Anything from Councilmembers?
I would just add to what Jason covered in the Town Manager Report. Looking forward to the Town Hall tomorrow, not only on the Four Corners topic, but also on the SMC Alert issue, which really is a town-wide issue. I know my fellow council members have already done the legwork to get the word out, but it's not too late to send a follow-up email, remind your constituents that we will be discussing that important topic. So please do continue to spread the word until tomorrow so we can have a good turnout.
Dick, anything else? Okay. I think that's it, other than any public communications, items on the agenda. We're good? Okay. We can adjourn this meeting, correct? So I'm adjourning this meeting at 7:50. And we're going into closed session.